Inside Politics, Beechwood City Council Candidate Debate 2023. I'm Kevin Adelstein, the publisher and CEO of the Cleveland Jewish News and president of the Cleveland Jewish Publication Company. Thank you for joining us for this important civic dialogue. We are recording this evening's debate thanks to the hardworking and talented audio/video students at Beechwood High School. And as soon as we have the file, which we expect to have it posted within, before the weekend, we will be posting to CJN.org as well as across all of our Cleveland Jewish News social media channels. Please follow us if you're not already doing so. In addition to the BHS students and faculty, I want to also thank Superintendent Bob Hardest for his incredible support and generosity in opening up the high school for us this evening. He and his entire administrative team have been a thrill to work with and we're truly appreciative for their support of us. Before I introduce our moderator, I want to acknowledge one of the eight candidates seeking office who unfortunately was not able to join us tonight in person. You'll be hearing an opening statement and closing statement from candidate Matt Hildebrand. However, Matt has asked that I share with you that unfortunately, he is home recovering from the tail end of a bout with COVID-19, and he is of course being responsible by following directives of his physician and quarantining at home. He is doing well, but extends his apologies for not being able to be present with us this evening. I will remind voters that his absence tonight is due to health and safety and in no way reflects his lack of desire in wanting to be present to present his platform to residents this evening. I encourage you to read more about him at his website and campaign Facebook page. For all those celebrating the Jewish High Holidays, all of us at the Cleveland Jewish News and the Cleveland Jewish Publication Company extend to you and your families the most joyous and happy new year. Shana tova. And now let's get started. Russ Mitchell, former anchor of the CBS Evening News Weekend Editions and the Early Show on Saturday and national correspondent for CBS News Sunday Morning, the CBS Evening News and the Early Show, joined the staff of Three News as managing editor, evening news and lead anchor of the 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM newscasts on January 16th, 2012. Russ was born in St. Louis and accepted his first television job at age 17 as a nighttime switchboard operator at KTVI-TV. He graduated from the University of Missouri and began his professional career at KMBC in Kansas City. Larger markets and bigger stations soon followed, then a move to New York as a co-anchor of the overnight CBS News broadcast Up to the Minute. In 1993, Russ was named as a correspondent for Eye to Eye with Connie Chung. In 1995, he was assigned to the CBS Washington Bureau. In July of 1997, Russ Mitchell was named co-anchor of CBS News Sunday Morning and traveled extensively as a reporter for the CBS Evening News with Dan Rather and 48 Hours. He covered the war in Bosnia, went to the Democratic Republic of Congo, and reported from Cuba, India, Indonesia, and the Marshall Islands. Russ Mitchell was on the anchor desk with Dan Rather on September 11th, 2001, and reported from ground zero in other parts of Manhattan on the days and weeks that followed. He anchored the live CBS Special Report coverage of the capture and death of Osama bin Laden on May 1st, 2011. Russ has been honored with multiple local and national Emmy Awards. He has received the National Association of Black Journalists Award, the Society Professional Journalist Sigma Delta Chi Award for his coverage of the Elian Gonzalez Story, the New York Association of Black Journalists Award for Best Documentary, and the Press Club of St. Louis 18th Annual Media Person of the Year Award. Perhaps not as well-known, but equally important to Russ is the 2007 Missouri Honor Medal. Russ received it for distinguished service in journalism from the University of Missouri School of Journalism, his alma mater. He also returns there every summer to help with the journalism workshop for high school students, a workshop he attended himself in 1977. Ladies and gentlemen, your moderator for this evening, please join me in welcoming to the podium, my friend, Russ Mitchell.
It is great to be with you tonight. Kevin, thank you for that introduction. I feel like I'm 17 until somebody says that 1977 workshop thing, so thanks a lot for that. I want to thank the Cleveland Jewish News for inviting me to be a part of this important discussion tonight. Let me just kind of tell you how things are going to go. We're going to have two minutes of opening statements for each candidate. Good evening, candidates. We're then going to do Q and A, and each person will have a minute to answer the question that I will pose. These questions come from the Cleveland Jewish News, from other local folks in town, and from you, and from your friendly moderator as well. For the folks here, running for office tonight, let me show you a couple of things here. Danielle and John, could you wave hi? Danielle and John have the time cards up there, so I am going to do my best to hold you to those two minutes, or one minute, whatever the case may be at that particular point. I'm also going to ask that, I'm going to introduce all the candidates, so I'm going to ask that you give a round of applause after I introduce all the candidates. And what I like to do, just to kind of make sure everybody's paying attention, is I'd like you to give one clap, just one, every time I mention a candidate's name in this introduction. So we're going to try, see how good you are. All right? All right. Cleveland Jewish News. Very good. I only had to do this one time tonight. Usually it takes several times, so I appreciate it. Let's introduce the candidates, beginning on my far left. This is just an introduction. They'll give their opening statements at the end of this. On my far left, Karen Tindell. Councilwoman June Taylor. Ali Stern. Councilwoman Danielle Shoykett. Mr. Hildebrand cannot be here tonight, but let's give him a clap. Matthew Hildebrand. Are you supposed to wait for me? Matthew Hildebrand. All right. I knew you were too quick. Gillian DeLong. Howard Darvin. Councilman Mike Burkins. Please give a round of applause to all our candidates this evening. We are going to have opening statements in alphabetical order. Councilman Burkins, we'll begin with you. Two minutes.
Hello. How are you doing here? Hello, hello, hello. Hello, hello? It's a different union. Let me see if I can get over.
Testing one, two?
There you go. I was faking it, so I wouldn't have to do this. Hello, I'm Mike Burkins. Whether you're here at the high school or watching on video, thank you. I know there are some that like me. I even know there are some that love me, but I'm speaking directly to my mom who's watching. And I also know there are some who aren't voting for me, but I can assure all of you that I love Beechwood just as much as you do. It has been a privilege serving as your Beechwood City Council member. I believe I've lived up to my promise to be independent, and regardless of your political party or if you put my sign in your yard, I have been fighting for you and the city's interests. More importantly than loving Beechwood, I believe in Beechwood and I always have. It's the reason why Nikki and I moved here in 2012 to start and raise our family. It's the reason my kids attend the schools, and it's the reason I do my best to promote the good things about Beechwood to all that will listen. But it's also the reason I point out, sometimes emphatically, when I know we can and should do better. Beechwood's not perfect, and that's okay, no city is. But we can't be better if we don't admit and address the flaws we have. Let me be clear, I am not against projects, and I'm not against spending. I am against overspending on projects. We all should be. When we spend 3.5 million on a playground project instead of just say 1.5 million, that's 2 million more that is no longer available for the things residents have been asking for, like better lighting on side streets, sidewalks on the streets that don't have them, or partnering with the schools to improve our community sports fields. I encourage everyone watching tonight to really listen to myself and my colleagues' responses. We all love Beechwood. We all want to serve. These should be minimum requirements to serve, not reasons to be elected. I am confident that the more you hear of my positions, the more you will understand and appreciate all I want to do for you and to make Beechwood better. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm Mike Burkins.
Councilman Burkins, thank you very much. Howard Darvin, you have two minutes.
Is this working? Great. Good evening. I'm Howard Darvin. I started my professional career in Beechwood as a vascular surgeon in 1991. Subsequently, our family moved into the community, lured by the location, excellent schools, city services, and amenities. That Beechwood magnetic attraction of schools, pools, and joules. This summer, we were very happy to celebrate our 25th anniversary as residents of our wonderful city. In my life as a surgeon, I was a managing partner, an assistant clinical professor, departmental chairperson, and a board member of both nonprofit and for-profit institutions. Additionally, I'm an entrepreneur, spouse, father, and recently a grandfather. All experiences that have taught me much about how to communicate, collaborate, delegate, negotiate, take responsibility, budget, prioritize, lead and plan, empathize and love. In 2022, I fully retired from paid work. My wife and I were fortunate enough to build our dream home in Beechwood. We could have moved anywhere, however, we value living in this community. I started to attend city council meetings several years ago and saw that there were some areas our city could improve upon. Even in a city with the enviable financial wherewithal of Beechwood, our leaders should recognize the value of a dollar, and it should be allocated as a scarce resource competitively. In general, I embrace sensible spending and competitive bidding. I've been successful both professionally and personally by utilizing this same philosophy. I will provide Beechwood residents with the amenities we all desire, but purchased intelligently. Thank you. I'm Howard Darvin.
Dr. Darvin, thank you. Gillian DeLong, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Gillian DeLong, and I am prepared to bring my proven leadership to Beechwood City Council. I have lived in Beechwood for 11 years, and I'm an active community member. You will see me at the pool, on the trails, at events, and my favorite, the dog park. I need to give a shout out to all my dog park four-legged friends out there. The work I have done on the school board and in my professional career truly represents what is possible when collaboration, transparency, and success drives decisions. In my professional career, I oversee funds at Cuyahoga Community College, which aligns extremely well with the city council's role as a fiscal steward. I have met with all the city directors and leaders and listened to residents. I am committed to providing the community data-driven, fact-based information that will move Beechwood forward. I believe a community leader is a champion for the city and demonstrates a willingness to work collaboratively to serve in the community's best interest. I am a leader that will move the city forward rather than continuing to litigate the past. I am honored to be making history by being on the first all-female slate with Danielle Shoykett, Ally Stern, and June Taylor. I am asking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Gillian DeLong, thank you. As Kevin pointed out, unfortunately, Matthew Hildebrand could not be with us here tonight, but he did record his opening statement. Please watch the monitors. In TV, we call this a quick pause.
Good evening. I'm Matt Hildebrand. My wife and I live on Hilltop Drive, and our two kids attend Fuchs Mizrahi School. Fortunately, I am unable to attend in person because I'm isolating with COVID. Thankfully, my symptoms are mild. While I can only be with you in spirit, I am thrilled to run alongside three other candidates that you will hear from this evening, Mike Burkins, Howard Darvin, and Karen Tindell. Our campaign is anchored by sensible spending. You might hear that we are against projects, but that is just untrue. We believe competition is the foundation of making the right decisions for residents. I am for a playground on Fairmount. I'm just not for a $3.5 million playground project. There are plenty of examples of appropriate spending on playgrounds in northeast Ohio, including a million-dollar project in Westlake and a $600,000 project in Stowe. I've read parents are driving 45 minutes or more because they are amazed with those playgrounds. When we spend thousands or millions more on a project than is needed, that is money no longer available for things residents have been asking the city to address for years. Where should we spend our money? Most every Friday night, I walk home from synagogue on streets that are without lights. Residents walk their dogs, we have runners, and of course, we can't forget about the deer. By installing appropriate streetlights on our side streets, we can help lighten the way for our walkers, our runners, and our drivers. We should also spend money on upgrading our substandard ball fields. How many of you have been to the Hilltop or Fairmount fields? If it rains, those fields are inaccessible for days. The city should partner with the schools to upgrade these fields, to bring them in line with so many other parts of Beechwood that are top-notch. Beechwood does many things really well. We have amazing city services, excellent police and fire, and I'm confident everyone speaking tonight feels the exact same way. But we can't pretend that all is perfect. I'm asking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
We appreciate Mr. Hildebrand recording that, and as Kevin pointed out, he recorded his closing statement as well. Now, let's hear two minutes from Councilwoman Danielle Shoykett.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Shoykett, and it is an honor to be here tonight. I would like to thank everyone for this opportunity. I'm a third-generation Beechwood resident. Both sets of my grandparents lived here my entire life. My dad's parents chose Beechwood because as Holocaust survivors, it was a safe and inclusive community. My mom grew up on Maidstone, and my parents have lived here since 2009. I quickly followed suit, moving here in 2010, when I met my husband Jeff, who also grew up in Beechwood. I cannot imagine raising our two kids, Wesley and Chandler, anywhere else. We are so fortunate to live in a city that provides our diverse community with top-notch safety forces, city services, an impressive commercial base which helps to keep our taxes low, and best-in-class amenities which reflects my vision for Beechwood. In February 2022, I was selected out of 16 distinguished candidates for the appointment to city council. I applied for the appointment and am running because, one, city council could be more diverse. I'm a millennial female with a corporate business background. Two, I'm motivated to set a good example for our future generations of our city. Three, I'm passionate about ensuring our community remains a community of choice for our businesses, residents, and employees. I've spent time learning about how city government operates and how all departments work collaboratively for the greater good of our city. I've advocated and implemented several safety measures such as a crosswalk at Bryden Elementary School, moved forward stalled discussions on sidewalk, streetlights, and tornado sirens, introduced green and sustainability public forums, and consideration of economic development tools. I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 7th, along with the other collaborative, strong, forward-thinking women on my slate. Thank you.
Danielle Shoykett, thank you. Ali Stern, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Ally Stern, and I'm honored to be here this evening. Oh, it's not on. There's a switch. Hold on. I don't want to do it too loud.
Here you go.
We're good. All right. Reset that clock. Yeah, we're good? Okay. All right. Thank you. My name is Ally Stern, and I'm honored to be here this evening. While this is my first time seeking public office, I have a proven track record in communication, collaboration, and securing funding for multimillion-dollar international projects that help improve the quality of life for individuals around the world. During my day job, I've been in the nonprofit sector for about 20 years. I've been a grant writer for one of the largest nonprofit Jewish organizations. As part of my job, I have to work with a global team. We have to analyze data, create messaging, and deliver fact-based, data-driven results to donors and constituents. Every day, I have to look at complex, ambitious, international projects and answer the question, why? Why is funded, needed, funding needed for this initiative? Why is this program going to take priority? And why is this the program we're choosing to improve the quality of life for vulnerable people around the world? I really want to bring that why-based thought process to Beechwood City Council. I come from a communications background, and I think that's one area where our city could really benefit from, is to communicate with residents in more diverse ways, either through town halls, text messaging services, and essentially providing thoughtful and timely responses to people with residents when they contact city officials asking for answers to their questions. When I'm not working, I'm also proud to serve the community through a variety of volunteer opportunities. I'm involved with the Jewish Federation, Mobilize the Vote Northeast Ohio. I serve on the board of two synagogues, because you can't just have one. And I also am a alumna of the Cleveland, sorry, of Rekindle Fellowship, which brings together leaders from Cleveland's black and Jewish communities for relationship building and idea sharing. Most importantly, I was honored to receive the Cleveland Jewish News Difference Maker Award in recognition of my service to the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Ali Stern, thank you. Councilwoman June Taylor, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Good evening. My name is June Taylor, and I'm honored to be here this evening. Thank you to the Cleveland Jewish News for hosting and for the schools for this facility this evening. My family and I have been residents here for over 28 years. Many of you know my husband Conrad, my daughter is a graduate of Beechwood High School and is a junior now to the Ohio State University. I was appointed to Beechwood City Council in 2018. I was elected in year 2020. My accomplishments as a councilperson include not only some initiations that I've done on my own, but I've worked well with others. For example, attracting the last substantial company, GE Current, to relocate in Beechwood, bringing 90 jobs and $10 million in revenue per year. I did this working with Mr. Jimmy Heller, one of our community leaders. During COVID, I helped cofound with Councilman Sinenberg, establishing our community garden. It's the first ADA-accessible garden, which supports residents to be outside and to combat loneliness. I also worked with our former mayor, Horowitz, to establish free hygiene supplies during COVID, making sure that anyone was able to protect themselves during the COVID period, regardless of cost. I also have aided Beechwood residents and mothers who have looked for jobs and employment. I've helped Beechwood business owners secure contracts on the corporate level as well in the private, in the public sector. I try to maintain an outstanding communications, not only with residents but with others. I have also shared my resources and work harmoniously with colleagues, councils, two administrations, current administration as well, department directors, and the safety directors. Full-time, I oversee Medicaid, which is an $85 million nonprofit, serving five counties here in our region. I respectfully ask the residents of Beechwood to vote for June Taylor on Tuesday, November 7th because of my track record of being a public servant, listening to residents, working for residents, and making Beechwood the best place to live. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor, thank you. Karen Tindell, you're two minutes. Opening statement, please.
Good evening. Thank you, CJN, for providing this opportunity for residents to engage with the candidates and get to know us, hear about our visions for the city of Beechwood. I'm Karen Tindell. My husband Daryl and I moved to Beechwood 25 years ago for the outstanding schools, abundant diversity, low taxes, and best-in-class city services. Having experienced the incredible amenities, I'm also aware of the incidents when the resident voices go unheard. That's why I'm running for Beechwood City Council, to be a strong advocate and voice for the residents. With an MBA and over 30 years of financial leadership in healthcare and nonprofits, I will collaborate with others to promote sensible spending on projects and ensure we develop comprehensive budgets and update our master plans. Beechwood is a thriving community, and we do many things well, but there are things we can do better, and with new leadership, we can begin to make that happen. During Rosh Hashanah services, our wise rabbi talked about preparing for change, and I will paraphrase in that he said, "What got us here won't get us there." Our city council needs to make changes in how we lead if we want to continue to be a destination community. In the last year, our city has spent or approved a tremendous amount on embarrassing lawsuit settlements and legal fees, engineering fees, overpriced recreation projects. For this to end, we need to elect new council members who are independent, critical thinkers, who will speak up and work tirelessly to protect your investments in our community, our homes, and our businesses. I'm running with three other like-minded candidates, Matt Hildebrand, Howard Darvin, and Mike Burkins, and by electing all four of us, we can leverage our combined strengths to change the way our city conducts business. We hope to earn your support this evening. Thank you.
Karen Tindell, thank you. Now we're going to enter the Q and A portion of our debate this evening. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer that question. If that candidate mentions another candidate in his or her answer, at my discretion, that other candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. So, let's go with the first question. We're going to begin with the city playground project. This past June, the city council voted 4 to 3 to approve spending $3.4 million for new playground equipment to be installed on the site of the current playground next to the Beechwood Family Aquatic Center. Incumbents June Taylor and Mike Burkins voted no, while Danielle Shoykett voted yes. To those incumbents, can you briefly provide your reasoning behind your vote? And to those hoping to join the council, how would you have voted and why? Councilwoman June Taylor, you have one minute. Why did you vote no on this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. The reason I voted no, there are two reasons in particular. A playground survey was done, and I'm a big supporter of data and making sure that you are counted in terms of what your interest is. Data was collected by the city of Beechwood. There was a playground survey done. The survey, I don't know if it was made public, but it might have been on the website, 243 responses. I did not think this was a good sampling size in terms of our city. The second reason that I voted no was because, and I'm for a playground, but this particular playground, was that we accepted $700,000 from the county. And when you accept other people's money, you then also have to play by other people's rules. I felt that we didn't need to accept the money. We could afford to do a playground on our own and allow our own residents to use the asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Shoykett, you voted yes. Why?
I did vote yes, and I stand behind my vote. I feel like the playground project is a wonderful regional project for our city. We did get $700,000 from Cuyahoga County, and Beechwood actually touches more suburbs than any other city within Cuyahoga County. This is a safe space for children to be able to play, create a sense of community. It allows families and all ages to be off screens, which is so important, especially post-COVID. I also feel like, you know, as a mom and bringing my kids to playgrounds, I can speak from firsthand experience that I feel like our playground could be safer. A poured rubberized surface, new equipment, and a completely enclosed playground is a place where our children deserve to play and live in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Burkins, you voted no. Why?
Yeah, I'm 100% for significant playground improvements. And if 3.5 million is what it would cost, what other cities had to spend to do this, I'd be 100% for it. But it doesn't take a lot of research to see that that isn't what this costs. Other cities, I think the most expensive one in the county's history, they spent $1 million. The city of Stowe last year spent 600 grand to build a beautiful playground that opened in July that is 60,000 square feet, twice as much as this one. I just think our residents, this is not, we all want a nicer playground, but we want to use logic when deciding on the type of playground, and especially when we're about to have two new playgrounds built in the city at Bryden and Hilltop due to the school bond issue passing. It just, it seems like we're spending way more money on this than I think every resident I've talked to thinks we should, and we can get a really nice playground accomplished for way, way less. Not because I'm saying so, because every other community has figured out how to do that.
Karen Tindell, how would you have voted on this?
I'm in full agreement that our city should have nice playgrounds for our young residents. I'm not against the project if it would have been to just refresh and upgrade the existing playground with newer equipment and enhance the safety with rubberized flooring. But what I am against is the $3.5 million investment that council went into without a budget and without sufficiently bidding this project. We've researched what an equally affluent suburb recently spent on a playground, and it's become clear to me that our city is not being good stewards with our tax dollars. I would have absolutely supported the project and had our council taken the appropriate steps to ensure we aren't overspending in excess of what an updated facility should have been. When we overspend on projects, funds are not available for other needs. So I would have voted no in this case.
Ali Stern, how would you have voted in this measure?
I would have supported the playground. I do support having a new renovation for our children. I think it's also important to point out when we talk about what other communities spend, that a number of years ago, we spent more than any other community to build the Beechwood Aquatic Center. And we could have just done what other communities did, but we wanted to be a leader and offer some really high-quality amenities to the city. I think that the Beechwood Aquatic Center is a highlight for a lot of families' experience in Beechwood. I fully anticipate that the playground is going to be the same. It was pointed out that families travel great distances in order to have access to world-class facilities and playgrounds. I think that my hope is that this will be a financial investment in our city as well, that families from other communities will come, spend... that families from other communities will come, spend some time at the playground, and then visit some of our other first-class businesses. We have restaurants nearby. We have the mall nearby. It's a way for our city to continue to attract new people who might not otherwise think that Beechwood is on the map for a public amenity.
Julian DeLong, what would your vote have been on this measure?
Yeah, thank you. I would have voted for it. I think every day in my job, I work in the Capitol Construction Department, I work with vendors, contractors, construction firms in a pre, I'm sorry, in a post-COVID world. And when you say $3.5 million, it is a lot of money, but when you break it out into the pieces of what the cost truly is, no matter if it was a new playground or not, $1.2 million of site work needed to be completed, period, regardless of what happened. We needed to do that. I also know that in my experience and what I see what city council did, you can say it didn't go through a competitive bid process, but it did. So I would have voted yes.
Howard Darvin, how would you have voted on this?
I absolutely favor a playground project, just not the $3.5 million one that was approved. The city is uniquely positioned. We have the Mandel JCC around the corner. It has Preston's Hope, a top 50 ranked playground in the nation. It is ADA accessible. People come from other counties to visit. I've spoken with Ken Fisher, whose son was Preston, and he was telling me that during the summertime, they see lots of outsiders coming in, in terms of buses coming from other day camps. The playground that has been approved by council will not require key fob for entry. We already have difficulty parking for the pool as it is. The fact that we now have pickleball courts, adding to the allure of that area will only make the situation worse for our community. I vote no.
Howard Darvin, thank you. And I didn't hear anybody mention anybody else's name, so nobody gets 30 seconds. So, thank you very much for cooperating there. Let's go to the second topic now, streetlights in the city. Many residents have asked for streetlights on every street, but especially near the Orthodox Campus along South Green Road. Are you in favor of streetlights? How would you get this project moving forward? And who should pay for the installation and then the electricity cost to operate those streetlights? Howard Darvin, when should we begin this round?
At the recent committee of the whole meeting, this was a topic of discussion, and it was estimated that 900 streetlights would be needed at an estimated cost of $15 million. That was the decorative streetlights with buried lines. There is a much less expensive option that was not priced out yet involving overhead streetlights that would be attached to the current poles that are already standing in the city. There are other factors that weigh in on the feasibility of this, including easements to run electric lines. With regard to paying for this, right now, members of the community who want streetlights can go ahead and petition the government. If you have enough people on the petition, the city will address it. You will probably be assessed, is my takeaway from the meeting. Thank you.
Ali Stern, I'll repeat the question because there's a lot to unpack right here. Are you in favor of streetlights? How would you get this project moving forward? Who should pay for the installation? And then the daily electricity cost to operate the streetlights? Ms. Stern?
I am in the house divided. My husband is absolutely opposed to streetlights. I very much want them, so within our house, this is a hot topic of conversation. I do think that the city has, and the residents have made their voices clear for the majority, that streetlights are needed. I do think, as Ms. Taylor had mentioned earlier, having data and facts to drive this decision is essential, especially if we're going to be incurring an expense in a lot of construction. I think that the balance for safety and also the balance for environmental protection also needs to be addressed. There are residents who are concerned about light pollution. There are residents that are concerned about how consistent lights are going to affect their sleep rhythms. I've heard lots of concerns regarding streetlights. I want to applaud Councilman Sinenberg, who did put forth a proposal of having decorative streetlights, which the residents and the city could partner on and provide some opportunities for community buy-in and for residential participation, particularly with amber-colored streetlights and maintaining a certain level of wattage so that it doesn't become a nuisance to our community, but rather an asset.
Julian DeLong, streetlights, yes or no? How do you get this project moving forward? Who's going to pay for the installation? And then the cost to keep the, get the juice on?
Yeah, excuse me. I am for streetlights. I think that's a very easy answer because anyone can be for it, but what does that mean? How do we get it to the next step? First off, I want to hear from all residents. When I'm out there talking to residents now, just like Ally's house, it's a mixed bag. Some people want them, some people don't. Per Ally's point, Eric brought up a great suggestion that each individual house can choose that. How we pay for it, another good discussion to have with our residents. What I can bring to the table is last year, I worked on the school board to bring the community together to create a vision for our elementary schools and pass a bond and get the buy-in from the residents to pay for it. So this is an example of the work that I have done and I can bring to city council. Thank you.
Karen Tindell, same question. Again, I'm going to repeat these because there's a lot there. Streetlights, yes or no? How do you get this project moving forward? Who's paying for the installation? And then the electricity to keep those lights on?
Thank you for the question. This is one of the things that has been part of our entire campaign so far for our slate, is to have lights, sidewalks, security. So I'm very glad that the city is now looking at this. As Howard mentioned, it was discussed Monday night in a meeting for the first time in quite a while. The city of Beechwood has brought this up over the years several times and has not moved forward with it. So, yes, I'm definitely in favor of it. And as far as how do we make it happen, we need to have leadership that will continue to push it forward and move it along. It's been brought up, you know, even in the meeting the other night, it was mentioned that this has come up before typically in election years when people talk it up, and then it hasn't been executed. So I think we need to make sure that we can make this happen for our residents because they're asking for it and they want it. Not everybody, of course, like what some of the other candidates up here have said, there are people who are for it, people who are against it, but what I'm hearing is the majority would like it. They feel we need more security, we need safety when people are walking at night. So I would definitely be for it. I think if we have enough money to pay for a playground, we can afford to help pay for this as well.
Okay, a lot to unpack there, so give you a few more seconds. So, Danielle Schoykett, same question to you. Favor of streetlights? How do you get the project going? Who's going to pay to put these lights up? And then how do you pay for electricity?
Yes, thank you. So I am in favor. I know this has been talked about for maybe even decades, and walking all the streets of Beechwood, I think there are probably just a handful that I haven't walked. It is a very mixed bag, talking to residents in all parts of our city. I am actually the person who moved this conversation forward. I asked for a meeting to talk about sidewalks, streetlights in June. It happened on the 18th, just a few days ago, so it was very exciting to see that happen. You know, Councilman Sinenberg, as other candidates mentioned, proposed a very creative solution that I think can ultimately save our community a lot of money when you compare it to implementing streetlights and phasing that into our community. You know, how do you choose which streets get preference and you implement streetlights first? There's a lot to consider. And is the greater need lighting up the sidewalks? You know, when cars drive down the street, their headlights light up the street. But when you're walking on a sidewalk that's dark, you can't see. So I'm in favor.
June Taylor, are you in favor of streetlights? How do you get the project moving? Who's going to pay for putting them up and then paying to keep the lights on?
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm in favor of streetlights due to safety being first and foremost, one of the most important things that the city needs to look at going forward. How do we pay for it? I'd like to see a collaboration between GE Current, the company that's located here. I'd like to also talk to the founder of Ring that is located here in northeastern Ohio. I'd also like to take a look at Councilman Sinenberg's proposal a little bit more closely. I would also encourage us to work with the Federation as well as Homeland Security in terms of the funding for it. We are a city with resources. There are oftentimes to do a grant match. There are oftentimes that you can use your data and statistics, like what we have at the mall, to your advantage with Homeland Security to secure fundings. I don't want to rely solely on FirstEnergy. I think a lot of us have lost confidence in them most recently, and I think that we have to look at more of a collaborative effort because technology with regard to streetlights and safety is evolving very quickly, and I think that we can take advantage of some of those new technologies. Thank you.
Mike Burkins, you can probably repeat these questions back to me.
I got it.
I've said them so many times, but I'm going to give you the courtesy.
Okay.
Are you in favor of the streetlights?
Yeah.
How would you get the project moving forward? How would you get the project moving forward? Who should pay for the installation? How do you keep the lights on?
Yeah, I'm from Shaker, and they always had lights on side streets. And now, at 47 years old, just last year was the first time I couldn't read a menu in a restaurant. And as I'm driving on some side streets at night, I'm actually going, oh, I get what happens when you get to this age. One of the things I thought was interesting at the meeting the other night was we were told, hey, this is, costs $15 million to do this, and Eric Sinenberg did what I have been, had proposed a thought process that I've been advocating for since we moved here, which was saying, hey, we know what we want, there's another way to get here. And I was so happy, because in almost anything that people said I've been against, I've always provided an other alternative, not actually one unique, like Eric did, which you should be commended for, usually pointing to that some other city could accomplish this for much less. So, the thought process that I've been advocating for forever, I'm really proud, happened the other night, where we realized, here's the end goal, here's what we're told it's cost, but hey, there's other ways to get there. And I think that pretty much can apply to almost every project we do. But yes, I mean, did I say I was for it? In case I didn't, I am.
You did. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to our next topic. Of course, below those streetlights are city sidewalks. Some streets do not have sidewalks. One in particular, Briden Road near the elementary school, is one of the many residents have publicly expressed concerns about for decades. Are you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? And if so, how would you move this project forward? Karen Tindell, we'll begin with you.
Absolutely in favor. I live on the very next street from Briden, on Halburton. And it's a shame that when my kids were little, they couldn't walk to school, and yet we live eight houses away. They had to take a bus and wake up an hour early. We definitely need to put some sidewalks on every single street in our community. I believe there's about maybe 10 streets left who don't have them. It's definitely going to be a challenge, but I think our city can do it. We need to work with, you know, a lot of different vendors and a lot of different people to figure out what actually is needed and come up with a budget, and then we can figure out what resources we can use and how we can help pay for it. But we definitely need sidewalks.
Julian DeLong, you favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? And if so, how would you move this project forward?
Yeah, thank you. I am in favor of sidewalks, but being that you talk about specifically Briden Road, I walked Briden Road probably a month ago and talked to residents, and once again, it's a mixed bag. Some people want sidewalks on Briden, and others do not. So I think it's very important, before this project moves forward, we must get the buy-in of the residents of Briden. And additionally, when we talk about if the city is going to pay for it, or if we're going to ask the residents to pay for it, the residents need to be part of that. But this goes along with, just because you hear, you can say, everybody wants sidewalks on Briden, but when you talk to the residents on Briden, you get a different answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Schoykett, are you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? And how would you move this project forward? If so?
Yes, thank you. I am in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road. I actually did a ride-along with our Public Works Director, I don't know, a couple months ago, and understand the depth of the project and how difficult it would be, but to me, it's a safety issue. We have kids, I was, you know, scared walking up and down Briden as well. Julian and I walked together, and I think it's a safety issue, and I think the city should pay for that because of it. There's a school located there. I advocated for and implemented a crosswalk at Briden. Why don't we have sidewalks? I understand that we have to move utility poles. We have to consider right-ofways. We have to look at all of those things, and it is an expensive project, but fortunately, Beechwood's in a position that we're able to do a project like that, as well as a $3.4 million playground.
Ally Stern, you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? How do you move the project forward if so?
I am in favor. I know this sounds trite, but I feel like everything that was just said by candidate Schoykett was how I feel as well. I do think it's an essential safety issue. There is a school on that street. But again, as candidate DeLong had mentioned, we really do need to survey the residents on the streets that are impacted by this. I would like to have a focus group of residents come in, meet with the engineer. One of the things I'm concerned about is just making sure, in terms of drainage and the driveways, I mean, to add a sidewalk, you have a driveway now which is, you know, gradually sloping into the street. If you add a sidewalk, what does that do to the neighbors' driveways? I want to make sure that, I don't, I'm not in favor in general of top-down decisions, where it's, a few people have said, we need this, so we're going to do it. We need to be able to talk to the people who are going to be most impacted by these decisions. Have them take a look at what it's going to look like with the sidewalk, how it's going to impact their property appearance, and then people can make an educated decision if this is something they want or not. But if it does improve the safety, I do think that should be paid for by the city, but it must include resident input.
Thank you. Mike Burkins, you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road?
Yeah.
And if so, how do you move this forward?
Sorry, I keep jumping.
That's okay.
Yeah, I've been in favor of sidewalks. Not just me, I think there's been a majority of votes on council for this for at least five or six years. When we put out surveys, we always put out surveys with all these caveats. Would you be in favor if you had to pay for some of it? This is something I believe the city should pay for, and I think the only accurate survey would be, if the city is paying for this, would you be in favor of it? There will be a few people who say no, but I'm pretty sure most will say yes. And I could be wrong, but you know, that's, if we posed that question, we'll find out. You know, and I'll tell you why it's important. Anybody who's driven by my house at the corner of Maidstone and Richmond knows that there's about 15 11-year-olds in the front yard almost at all times doing something. And that can only happen because half the neighborhood can ride bikes to our house. And it's a wonderful thing. It costs us a fortune in chips and soda, but we're happy to do it. But if I lived on Briden, I wouldn't be able to let my kid even ride his bike, you know, maybe across the street, but not down the street. I think this is something we need to do. There's been a support for it for a long time, and we just need to do it. It costs a lot. I get it, but this is something we need to do.
June Taylor, are you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? And if so, how do you move this forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I'm in favor of sidewalks on Briden and any other street, but I am not in favor of dictating it from a city council standpoint. I think that as an organization, and I'd like to work with the administration on this, we have to clearly understand what is involved structurally, from an engineering standpoint, from the landscaping standpoint, from the sewer district standpoint. We have had, we've just really engaged in some large sewer district projects in our city. Briden is a very complex, if not one of the most complex streets in the fabric of our city. Next, I think that, as was said earlier, I've walked that street as well, and the residents, some like it the way it is, and they favor the sort of country aspect to it, and some do not. But as councilmembers, I think that we have to become more in tune with what our residents want. And so, I want to see more surveys, I want to see more data, and I also want to see more specific breakdowns of the cost of materials, given where we are in this period.
Thank you. Howard Darvin, are you in favor of adding sidewalks on Briden Road? And how would you move this project forward if you are in favor of this?
I am a firm yes on sidewalks on Briden. Interestingly enough, we chose to move to Beechwood because they had sidewalks, and we built a house on Woodside Lane, which had lovely sidewalks on front of it. And ironically, we built a second home, our dream home, on Briden Road, and we find ourselves without sidewalks now. It is, it's a complex road. It's one of the older roads in the city, a lot of old houses that are now being taken down and new houses being put up. It's a complex issue. There is going to be a lot of cost involved. It's a street that has two-way traffic. It's a cut-through from Green to Richmond Road, and people frequently speed. The limit is not enforced that well. I feel that the city needs to pay for this. It is a safety issue. I don't know what the cost is yet, but a way to mitigate that is, because it's safety, we can look at only paving one side of the street.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us go to our next question now. ODOT came to the city of Beachwood with a regional safety project for improvements on the Chagrin-Richmond I-271 corridor. The question is, do you support this safety project? Why or why not? Howard Darvin, we'll begin with you.
I am directly affected by this issue. Part of the project involves changing the traffic flow on Brighton onto Richmond Road. I am against the project. I did a search, information lookup of the number of accidents. It's sort of hard to tell what's been happening because of COVID and decreased traffic flow, but I don't feel that the, that the safety issue warrants a $20 million-plus expenditure. The community needs buy-in. The existing government has excluded the neighbors from a town hall meeting to discuss this, and I feel that this issue is being forced on us from the top down without our buy-in. I'm a no.
June Taylor, do you support this ODOT proposal?
Mr. Mitchell, yes, I support this ODOT proposal. And what I would like to see working in concert with ODOT is, first, I would like to see an integration of communication strategies, of more community engagement, like Dr. Darvin just mentioned, where ODOT actually comes and hosts meetings and gets to understand more about our community and what our needs of our residents are where this would be affected. With the oncoming of more jobs coming to Ahuja and the Harvard corridor, our traffic situation is very, very serious. I-271, Chagrin, I-271 in Cedar, and now Harvard are one of the top 15 exchanges in the state of Ohio. Everyone knows what it's like when traffic lets out, and that's why we use phrases like "cut-throughs." I am confident that if ODOT were to come to our community and have these sort of community engagement meetings, they could find the right type of solutions. Many of us have traveled to Columbus. You see when you enter Polaris, how it is. That's the sort of parallel that would be in our city, and I think they would work with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Stern, do you support this ODOT project?
I echo a lot of the concerns regarding safety in terms of traffic and increased traffic. I was coming home, I think it was about two months ago, when I was right next to a head-on collision that took place in that area. It was very frightening. I think that personally, this is an area where I'm going to need to educate myself a little bit more. Having not served on council yet, I would like to meet with the relevant individuals and get a greater sense of the scale of this project. But I do think that we are seeing increased traffic, and as we continue to be a community of choice for residents and businesses, that means that not only are attracting more people to our city who live here, but employees as well. And we need to be forward-thinking when it comes to mitigating traffic and congestion.
Danielle Schoykett, do you support this project?
Yes, I do support this project. From what I understand, before my time on council, this came before city council, and we gave up about $15 million of state money. This project has regional impact, not only for the safety of Beachwood residents, but it also has a major impact on economic development. You know, we have commuters coming through that intersection from all surrounding communities, and to me, safety is number one. There have been about 506 accidents reported between 2016 and 2018 by a traffic study that we've done, and it's also on ODOT safety rankings. It's up there and on the list. So as a community, I feel like we need to look at the impact that's going to have. I live in that area too. I know that, you know, there are concerns about traffic and taking different routes, but we really need to take a look at what's going to benefit our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Tindall, do you support the project?
No, I do not. As you've heard from some of the city leaders up here on the panel with me, they'll tell you that there is a major traffic congestion and safety issue at Chagrin and I-271 that needs to be addressed. But the fact is, it's a minor traffic delay that impacts drivers on weekdays only during peak rush hour traffic. Despite these facts, the city is attempting to move forward a project and overhaul the traffic patterns while they're waiting to hear from ODOT for the funding. This proposal would include limiting traffic to write-in and write-out on Brighton and Richmond, which would affect over 200 families. This is an example of a time when residents' voices are not being heard. We have gone to meetings, we have spoke up about this. This is the third time this project is being brought to the city. In 2022, the city passed this with a vote of six to one, even with strong resident opposition. Our voices are not being heard. I'm against it.
Mike Burkhans, do you support this?
No, I don't. I think it was 2017 or 19, I'm confused, where this was first put in front of council, and there was four people who voted against it. I voted, when I finally had a chance to vote against it, it was for the exact same reason. One, it isn't even the most dangerous, according to ODOT, intersection in the city. And, you know, most people said yes. You know, every once in a while, the traffic builds up, and you have to wait two light cycles instead of one. And this is just not a problem that deserves a $20 million solution to have such a negative impact on all these streets. The first time, the council chambers were packed with people advocating against it, and it was voted down. Then the next time I was on council, it never actually got to a vote because they had a community meeting, and again, council chambers were packed with people advocating against it, and I don't think it went to a vote because, I think COVID happened, but I also think they realized there wasn't the votes for it. And then nothing has changed. Actually, ODOT safety rankings, it's become safer as far as the accident count, and it's become more expensive. We don't know how much, but I don't know what's changed, but all of a sudden, there were no longer four people against it, and I was the only one against them, against it for the same reasons.
Time. Julian DeLong, you support this?
Yes, thank you. I am for this project, and I echo what Ms. Taylor said about we need to get residents' buy-in. Because once again, when I'm talking to residents on Brighton, they're talking and saying, I would love it to be a cul-de-sac. I would love it to be a write-in, write-out. Just because someone says out loud, everybody is saying they want it that way. I don't live in that world. I need to live in data and facts. I want surveys, I want data from the residents. I don't want to hear just from one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our next topic now. We're going to move over to the police department, and specifically, the no-confidence vote of the police chief and deputy chief. Last December, members of the Beachwood Police Union delivered a vote of no confidence in the leadership of Police Chief Kate McLaughlin and Deputy Chief John Ressick. Do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department? Why or why not? Julian DeLong, you kick us off.
Thank you. I absolutely have confidence in our public safety and our leadership in public safety. I met with Chief McLaughlin, and we discussed the safety in the city. And I believe that, I hear from residents when they say that they do not feel safe. But I want to continue to work with public safety to continue to increase resources that will provide residents a better sense of comfort. In the past two years, under her leadership, they've increased the number of cameras, installed plate readers, and added a police hub in the mall. These are all things that make Beachwood safe. Beachwood is safe. Thank you.
Ally Stern, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
I do. I've lived in a lot of different cities. I've never lived anywhere with quite an active police presence as I have in Beachwood. Between the Federation and also the fine men and women who protect our streets, I think that we are extremely fortunate to have the police force that we do. When I drop my children off at school every day, there is a community resource officer who knows my child by name. I know him by name. There are police officers who I greet every Shabbat when I'm going into my synagogue. We are truly, truly blessed to be protected by some of the finest men and women. I do have confidence in the leadership of our police force. I have confidence in our police officers, and I think that we are all extremely fortunate to live in a city that has the quality of policing that we do.
Mike Burkhans, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
Yeah, I don't think that's appropriate for me to answer, because I just don't, I'm not a policeman, I don't work there, but I think there's a real problem when our reaction to the rank-and-file of our police, making, doing everything they can to express that they have some real issues, that our response is to ignore them. I think that comes from the top leadership, and, you know, when, you know, the Ms. Marple's email was pointing out issues, whether they're legitimate or not, I definitely don't think the reaction to those concerns was to hire a law firm to try to find out who dares criticizing our police chief. I could understand why some of our rank-and-file don't feel supported when this is kind of the attitude, when somebody wants to raise issues and have concerns. I think that attitude's got to change. Those are the people, the rank-and-file, that, you know, they deserve to be respected and heard, and I hope we really, really take an effort to work on that.
June Taylor, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
Thank you for the question. I have confidence in our safety forces. I have the highest respect for the individuals, men and women, who put their lives on the line and the jobs they do every day to protect all of us. What concerns me is that I do not believe at this time we are using some of the most state-of-the-art technology in safety that we could. As a former chair of the Ohio Casino Commission, I was privy to some surveillance and technologies that I think our city could benefit from. Cities like Westlake are using them. They have robots that are patrolling their neighborhoods, that are patrolling their malls. Those are things that are, I will say, they save the lives of their safety forces, but they also have eyes and ears when we're asleep. Our city unfortunately experienced a very, very brazen robbery, the likes of one that hadn't occurred before.
Your time is up. Going to give you five seconds.
I don't want to have it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Tindall, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
So it's an interesting question, because to be honest, I'm not sure at this point. I do have confidence completely in the men and women who work on our safety forces. I think they do an excellent job providing day-to-day security to the residents in the community and the businesses. When I say that I have mixed feelings and I'm not sure, it has to do with, you know, the issue that Mike brought up, having to do with the vote of confidence in how the city handled it. And I don't really know what came of it, to be honest, like if it was thoroughly investigated or not, or why our officers feel this way, and why they felt they weren't supported, that they voted this way to begin with. As somebody who's not currently on council, I feel that the amount of information I have is very limited, so it would be a difficult question for me to answer completely, as well as some of the people sitting up here who are on council and have those interactions with the leadership on a daily basis.
Howard Darvin, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
I have confidence in our police force. I feel Beachwood is a very safe city. Most of the crimes that I hear about are crimes of opportunity, except for the one violent crime that thankfully didn't turn into an injury. The, whether or not the police officers have confidence in the chief is something that, you know, I have no way of knowing. The fact that I feel safe in our city, the combination of our police, the Federation forces, leads me to believe that the chief is doing a good job. Whether or not her subordinates feel that way, I can't comment.
Danielle Schoykett, do you have confidence in the leadership of the police department?
Yes, I do have full confidence in the leadership of our police department. Beachwood Police Department is fully staffed and funded. We are one of the safest communities around, arguably. The violent crimes here are far and few between. Unfortunately, isolated incidents, like the one that was spoken of, can happen anywhere. I can say that the 911 calls that we receive from the mall or just across the community have remained relatively flat and have even declined slightly across Beachwood. You know, we implemented a substation at the mall, license plate readers. Our police chief wants a drone for our city to protect us, you know, at larger events, and I support all of those things. And I truly feel that they are trying to increase our level of safety and security even more so. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to stay with the police department now, and this actually came up in this round of questioning, but we'll ask it specifically now. The city council voted four to three last year to pay up to $25,000 to a law firm to investigate anonymous, defamatory, and threatening emails and online postings directed to or concerning senior administrative staff, and then to seek retribution against that individual. We later learned the senior administrative staff was the police chief. Incumbents Mike Burkhans and June Taylor voted no, while Danielle Schoykett voted yes regarding the legal fee. To those incumbents, why did you vote the way you did on that expenditure? And to those hoping to join the council, how would you have voted and why? Danielle Schoykett, we'll begin with you.
Thank you.
Why did you vote yes?
Thank you. Yes, I did vote for it. I felt like this was a situation where it was a hostile work environment. Yes, the mayor could not hire outside legal, so council had to approve it, and we actually ended up only paying $15,000, not 25. I think this was sending a very positive message to our city employees that we care about them, we have their backs. I work for American Express. I would hope that my company would do the exact same thing. And if we didn't do this, honestly, we could open ourselves up to a lawsuit and be at stake for even more money than this. So yes, I did vote for it and stand behind my vote. Thank you.
June Taylor, you voted no. Why?
Yes, I care about our employees. I care about the administration. I also care about our city's revenue. I care about our residents' dollars. I voted no because it is our residents' monies, and I understand the First Amendment and the right of those to say things as horrible and as despicable as they may be. Unfortunately, there are some of us in positions of public service that have to endure these sort of things. I have endured it myself personally, serving in a role here on a state level. I received quite vitriolic racist emails on a regular basis, and I was told that it was part of being in public service and part of my position. So yes, I voted no, and I stand by my position.
Mike Burkhans, you also voted no. Why?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we're public officials. People are allowed to criticize us, and we can't dictate the parameters in which they're allowed to use to criticize us. Nobody says we're supposed to like it, but we signed up for this, and I think we have a real problem. I mean, at Monday night's council meeting, somebody was chastised for making criticisms of the police, of the $3.5 million playground, because they called it a sandbox, which was clear sarcasm. You know, the city and its officials can't chastise people. They can chastise them, but they can't demand that they not use sarcasm to make a point. People are allowed to criticize us. They're allowed to criticize us however they want, and that's free speech. And I think it's, I knew when we did this exactly how it was going to end. I knew a judge was going to say no way, and this was going to be an embarrassment to the city, and that's what happened, and it was very predictable.
Karen Tindall, how would you have voted on this expenditure? And why?
I would have voted no, and I'm in complete agreement with what Mike said. This violates First Amendment, first of all, and I would have been more concerned with what was said rather than focus on who said it and spend time, money, and energy on all this, trying to figure out who said it, and not pay any attention to what was said. This is a big thing to say, you know, that somebody, you know, had all these comments about the leadership of the police force, and we did nothing to follow through on what they said, and is there any validity to it? And we were so fixated on finding out who said it that we missed an opportunity here to support the employees and to do better.
Howard Darvin, how would you have voted on this?
I would have voted no. Having received an A in my high school civics class, I felt very confident that this was protected speech under the First Amendment. Additionally, I happened to subscribe to the Proton email that the sender of this defamatory email also used. And I felt very confident that the owner would not have his name divulged without a crime being committed. I felt that this was going to be a waste of funds, that the judge's ruling was very predictable, and as it turned out, I'm glad that it was only a $15,000 waste rather than a $25,000 waste.
Julian DeLong, how would you have voted on this?
I would have voted yes, and it's my understanding. I would have voted yes. And it's my understanding, and there is a difference between free speech and what they were trying to identify is if it was an employee of the department. Because that information, my understanding was that this information that was shared happened between two employees. It wasn't just a public, a resident asking for it. It's unfortunate that it's predictable that there are these anonymous emails. This is a pattern on city council. It's a, it's a bigger issue than that. And I think it's important to understand that when you're dealing with someone attacking someone in an anonymous way, and if it's someone you work with, that needs to be identified. And my understanding is that's the reason why they wanted to investigate it. If it was someone they worked with versus just an outside resident, which absolutely has the right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Stern, how would you have voted?
I believe, excuse me, I believe that I would have voted no. I, the comments that were made on social media, I think were abhorrent. I think that they were tasteless. But I also think that, that they're protected and that anonymous speech is protected speech. I do echo the concerns that Julian has brought up, that there does seem to be a pattern with anonymous emails, anonymous defamatory remarks that are being made. I, I wish that that would stop. I don't think it's productive. I think that it pits residents against one another. But ultimately, I, free speech has to be protected. And for some of us, this is what we're signing up for.
Thank you. I think I got to everybody on here on this particular question. So that's great. It is 8:13 and we wanted to start the closing statements by 8:15. So we're going to go to those right now. So we don't run over. I know some of the candidates are going to be around afterward to answer any specific questions that you have. But once again, all the candidates, I believe we said one minute, right? One minute for closing statements. And we're going to go in reverse order than we did in the opening statements. Karen Tindall, your closing statement.
Tonight, you had the opportunity to hear from candidates hoping to secure or retain a seat on city council. But let's face it, every person running has the education and experience to be a community leader and collaborate with others. We can say we will lend our business expertise. We are proven leaders. We are esteemed executives. But collectively, we are all residents who are motivated by whatever personal reason to seek this office. It's true. We all know that Beechwood is far better off than most of our surrounding suburbs. But it doesn't mean that a platform of sensible spending is unwarranted at this time to protect our financial resources for years to come without the need for future tax increases. As we approach this election season, let's remember that it's our collective voice that matters most. Your vote is your chance to influence the direction of our community. Do you want to remain on this path? Or are you looking for leadership that will change the way we function as a legislative arm of the city? By choosing myself, Matt Hildebrand, Howard Darvin, and Mike Burkhans, we will ask questions, seek answers, and invest.
Your time is up. Thanks a lot. Give you a few extra seconds there. Thank you very much. June Taylor, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I am humbly serving my third mayor in our city and I want to continue to represent you, our citizens of Beechwood, because there has to be an experienced, pragmatic voice that uses rational, common sense approach to working with our residents. It is so important that you also be able to work with businesses, the administration, fellow council members, city employees, and safety forces. I am honorably serving my second governor, who has grown our state economically. The way Ohio has grown, I want our city, Beechwood, to grow as well. I believe in succession planning. I believe in teaching young people how to learn about the wheels of government. I want to have a stronger partnership with our schools and bring more students into city hall, as well as working with council. I also want to make sure that you know that as I represent you, I am focused on your needs and what you want the solutions for our city to be. I respectfully ask for you to vote for me November 7th this year, this fall. Thank you.
Ally Stern, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here this evening. Everyone who's in this room shares a concern about Beechwood's future. And we all want to make sure that our community remains a community of choice for residents and for our businesses as well. To do that, we have to elect leaders who understand how to see the big picture, know how to work as a team, and make things happen. And if you want to get something done, ask a busy mom. I am proud to have the support of the Cuyahoga Democratic Women's Caucus, the Black Women's Political Action Committee, the Cuyahoga County Democratic Party, and perhaps most importantly, our very own labor union here in Beechwood, the Laborers Local 860. Most importantly, I'm honored to have the support of my friends and neighbors. And I really hope to have the privilege of serving all of you as well. I would also like to make a point that, as you've all seen, I'm running with Julian DeLong, Danielle Shoykett, and June Taylor. Many of us had answered our questions differently this evening. It's not because we think the same. It's because that we have the same value of serving the city the same, with open hearts, open ears, and with a dedication to service. We hope that we receive your vote and I hope that I earn your vote this November 7th.
Danielle Shoykett, your one-minute closing statement.
I want to thank the Cleveland Jewish News and our moderator this evening, Russ Mitchell, the Beechwood Schools, members of the audience, and all residents for a spirited candidate debate. I would like to reiterate to Beechwood voters that who you elect to city council truly matters. This affects the direction and success of our city, our amenities, and the caliber of individuals who want to work for Beechwood. My vision and plan for Beechwood has been substantiated through numerous organizations like the Cuyahoga County Democratic Party, Beechwood Democratic Ward Club, unions, and elected officials. I'm approaching the city council position from a servant leadership perspective. One constituent is the Beechwood resident, but the other is our city employee. Enabling our employees to have the supportive work environment translates to providing top-notch services to our residents. If keeping taxes low, maintaining the level of superior services and outstanding amenities is a priority for you, then I respectfully ask for your vote, along with my all-female slate, who will advocate for you on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
Matthew Hildebrand recorded his closing statement. Please, once again, watch the monitors.
Hello, it's me again. I wish I was with you in person tonight. This is one of those special events on the calendar I did not want to miss. However, sometimes events are out of our hands, and this is one of those. As I said earlier, and as I'm sure my colleagues already stated, our campaign is anchored by sensible spending. We want to partner with other members of council and the administration to address issues that benefit our amazing business community and our residents. For the past one and a half years, I have attended virtually every council meeting and many committee meetings. I've done this as an interested resident. Each of us has our passions in life, and this is mine. I understand how the city operates, and I'm confident I will hit the ground running as soon as I enter office. I'm thrilled to run alongside three other candidates during this campaign, Mike Burkhans, Howard Darvin, and Karen Tindall. I invite you to visit our website at www.fourforbeachwoodcitycouncil.com to read more about who we are and the issues we care about. My name is Matt Hildebrand, and I'm asking for your vote for Beechwood City Council on November 7th. Thank you.
And I know we all wish Mr. Hildebrand a speedy recovery. Julian DeLong, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I want to thank the Cleveland Jewish News and the moderator, Mr. Mitchell. I want to end with a quick story. I was volunteering at shred day and a resident came through who is very vocal about any type of spending, city, school. He doesn't want any spending. And in that moment, when he came through the line, I thought to myself, okay, he's never going to use the dog park or the pickleball courts or the pool, but he is using one of our amenities. He's using shred day, right? So all Beechwood residents deserve amenities that fits their needs now and in the future. We, Beechwood does not have to pick amenities one over the other. We can celebrate them all. You as residents deserve the best. Let's move Beechwood forward. I am asking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Howard Darvin, your one-minute closing statement, please.
You've heard from eight candidates tonight. There are similarities and vast differences among us. We all want to live in a great community. Each, in our own way, advocated their best path forward for our city. Recently, I've not seen from our government adequate planning, foresight, collaboration, and execution that form bonds, making a great city a magnificent community. Transparency, thoughtfulness, integrity, leadership, the ability to listen and seek the opinions of others are competencies I possess to create those bonds. I have the time, I have the experience, we have the passion. Let's build a better Beechwood together. Humbly, I ask you to vote for Karen, Mike, Matt, and me, Howard Darvin. Thank you.
Mike Burkhans, your one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, I just threw out everything I wrote. A few months ago, I wasn't sure if I was going to run. There are things I believe reasonable people can disagree on and things that I don't think they can. And there had been so many issues, whether it's buying 56 chairs for the pool that cost between 755 and 1,200 bucks apiece, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on an outdoor fitness court before replacing basketball courts or a $3.5 million playground, that I couldn't believe I was on the losing side of these votes. I couldn't believe, I mean, the residents, there was very few residents who didn't share my position. And I figured, what's the point of running? Because even if I win, these six one votes are going to continue. And that's when I talked to one of my running mates. And he said, there's an opportunity for real change. There's an election coming up. There's four open seats. And if you give residents four options of candidates they can choose that also agree with you on these things that I don't think reasonable people can disagree, we are giving residents an opportunity to have a real change this November. And I'm running along for, for three other candidates that also are going to align with me on these issues that I don't think any reasonable person can disagree on. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Cleveland Jewish News for inviting me to be a part of this very important discussion tonight. I want to thank the candidates for being here. They told me before I came, I needed a helmet and armor because this was going to get tough. But you guys were so nice to each other. Your answers were so thoughtful. I know we all appreciate that. And once again, the candidates, some of them at least, are going to stick around and answer some of your questions. Thank you for coming tonight. Vote on November 7th. Be safe. Good night.